Welcome to the City of Bothell City Council Study Session of May 10, 2016. Please join me. All right, all council members are here except for Councilmember Tom Agnew and Councilmember Dulce Pavy who are both absent and excused. The study session items we're going to hear tonight, so it doesn't say to approve the agenda, so I just wanted to point out that the public comment period, so I need to check with councils, it's in our protocol manual that we don't have studies, we don't have comment during study session. I added it based on a request from Councilmember Freed, and it's on the agenda for only 30 minutes, but I would like it to be one hour, and so I wanted to make sure, based on protocol, to make sure that we have a consent of the majority of council that want a public comment period. Councilmember Sandberg? It's green. Try using Councilmember McNeil's. All right, Councilmember Sandberg says she's in support of that. We don't have to have a vote. Hold on, we're having a sound problem here. Should we go to recess and try again here in a couple minutes? Let's take a, you need, how much time do you think you need to get the microphones working?
Just a couple minutes.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess and start back up in 6:00, oh, let's say make it 6:10. Okay, we're back on. So what we were talking about was the visitor section that was added to the meeting, and Councilmember Sandberg, you had a comment on extending the visitor section to one hour and having it after 8:15.
Yes, I support extending it from 30 minutes to 60 minutes, but we have two items prior to the break, the transit discussion and the Fitzgerald sub-area discussion, that I know there are members of the public that would like to comment on that, and I'm afraid if that comes after our discussion, then we won't benefit from the comments that they have.
Does anybody else want to speak on whether or not we want to add 30 minutes to the existing visitor section and what to do with an additional visitor section?
I'm not in support of that only because our policy is not to have comments during study session, and I feel like this visitor section is specific to, well, we all know what it's specific to.
Does anybody else want to chime in? We need a majority of council to decide whether we're having a visitor section and how.
I'm in support of extending the visitor section to one hour.
Okay.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I'm certainly in support of having the executive, or not executive session, the visitor section at 8:15 as discussed. I'm not opposed to Councilmember Sandberg's mention of allowing people to speak to each study session at the beginning. I know that is out of order, what we typically do, but if, maybe Councilmember Sandberg knows that some people are here to speak, I don't know that anybody is to each one of these items, but you do know that. So that's up to you, regards if you would want to let people speak prior to each study session.
So I do, I don't support doing a separate visitor section tonight. We don't typically have visitor sections at study sessions, and we added one tonight for the community. This isn't the last and only, there's no decisions made at a study session, so we will have another opportunity for input from the public on the other items on our agenda. Okay, so we'll move into, is there any other changes to tonight's agenda? I just, Councilmember Sandberg?
Do we have an executive session planned for this evening?
You don't have one planned? Yeah, we would like, I'd like to have an executive session for 15 minutes on.
Matters of personnel.
Is it personnel? Yeah, okay, it could be personnel and litigation matters.
Yes.
Yeah. Councilmember McNeil?
So the council committee reports say if needed, I do need a little bit of time on that seeking direction on an item.
Okay, all 30 minutes, or how much time do you think you need?
I probably just need 10 minutes, I just want to seek the council's direction on it.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I have an update as well.
Okay, so 20 minutes, fine. Okay, any other community reports?
No, are we talking about projected agenda as well?
It's not on our agenda, but if you want to bring it up, we certainly.
Yeah, I believe all of us have received a lot of emails or a few emails regarding last week, what happened last week, so I don't know if it might be helpful to put on the future agenda, just more of an open discussion as a council, potentially removing the executive session privilege, so there is no secrecy in regards to any discussions that took place regarding Bob Stowe's employment here in the city. So I'd certainly like to see that put forward and potentially release of emails regards to any conversation from our city emails regarding his employment.
I have a point of clarification. Our city emails are requestable through public records requests, so that is a given. I don't think we need to meet to discuss that. Any city document, city email is requestable.
It just makes it easier for the public to know that this council is being open and transparent with all the discussions regarding the employment of Bob Stowe, rather than staff having to come dig through those type of emails.
So how many council members are interested in having that added to our, so our agendas are packed. Do you have a specific date that you'd like to have that conversation?
I think the first week of June, we could add a half-hour discussion regarding our conversations, removing executive session privileges to discuss the employment of Bob Stowe.
Deputy Mayor?
I would like legal counsel on that first. We received an email that gave us direction to not share those things, so I'm not in favor of sharing something if our legal counsel is telling us not to.
So I would agree, and let's just pick up the projected agenda at the next meeting, when it's actually scheduled.
Just pointing, do we have a city attorney here tonight or not?
City attorney will be back, he's at a dental appointment, but he'll be here at 8 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's move into the first study session, oh wait, so, no, we agreed not to do visitor comment, okay. AB 16-077 study session with the King County Metro Sound Transit and Community Transit, and Sherman Gong is here as our transportation planner. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we just want to provide an opportunity for you to get an update from Sound Transit staff and King County staff to present their current draft system plan for the Sound Transit III proposed project list, and for the King County Long Range, King County Metro Long Range plans that they just released a couple weeks ago. We've been working with you on comment letters for the Sound Transit III process for the last year. The draft system plan has been released and is kind of at the tail end of the comment period right now, but we still have opportunity to provide more comments if we need to. King County, King County Metro's long-range plan was released, they've been in the process of also developing that plan for the last year, and recently released their draft plan for comments at this time. You have a comment letter that we drafted, that's drafted for your review also in there that will be brought back next week for further discussion. We also, staff has also been working with the King County Metro staff on an alternative services plan, which is a little more, which is a part of the long-range plan, but is more focused on local service, and staff has been very involved with community development staff, attending those types of input and public, you know, public input sessions that they've used to develop that program, very, very unique and innovative opportunities for local service there. So tonight, we have our Sound Transit III staff here, is Kathy Leal, and she'll start off, she'll be followed by Lisa Schaefer from the King County Metro, and we also have community transit staff here also, because this is an opportunity for you to ask questions from a system-wide standpoint, and, you know, if you have any questions on how they are going to relate to each other, then this is the perfect time to do that. So we'll just go ahead and start with Kathy first. And let me pull up your. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for inviting me here today to give you a brief overview of the ST III draft system plan. So it's been a very busy and exciting month or so where we've gone out throughout the region to share the draft system plan with jurisdictions, city councils, open houses throughout the region. There's been a tremendous amount of interest in the next set of high-capacity transit investments with, with our economy booming, with population increasing, and our limited road space. There's much interest in the long-term opportunities to get throughout the region, and so I'm very pleased to be here tonight. Just a brief overview or a refresher on the Sound Transit District. This map shows our district. We encompass the most populated areas of the three counties, Snohomish, King, and Pierce Counties. Fifty-two cities fall within the Sound Transit District, more than 1,000 square miles, and 3 million people, which is almost 40% of the entire state's population, are within our district. Our services are Sound Transit Regional Express Bus Service, Sounder Commuter Rail Service, and Link Light Rail Service. Just briefly, you may have heard or recall that in March, we opened up two important stations, light rail stations in our system, the Capitol Hill and Husky Stadium Station, and ridership has just been really exceeding expectations so far, so lots of excitement. For the past 14 years, ridership on our systems have been steadily increasing, and whoops, oh, okay, and we expect that to continue as we open up more stations over the coming six or seven years. So what's coming online? Again, the University Link Extension just opened. We have another light rail station that will be opening in the fall, just the one south of the SeaTac Station. In 2021, North Gate Link Extension will open, which includes three stations. Tacoma Link Extension, and expect it in 2022. And then 2023 is going to be a very big year, East Link Extension, Lynwood Link Extension, and extension to Kent Des Moines. The Lynwood Link Extension includes five stations, including station at I-5 and 145th, which connects to the BRT line that is, goes through your city in the ST III plan. So with the, once, as we look toward completing those major capital programs, that starts to bring us to ST III, which will be the next set of high-capacity transit investments beyond those that are going to be completed through the year 2023. Several years ago, the Puget Sound Regional Council indicated that about a million more people would be moving into the region by the year 2040, and this started a very serious discussion by the Sound Transit Board to think about, how are we as a region going to be able to accommodate that tremendous increase in population? So that's when the board started to seriously look at the next set of transit investments. So over the last several years, we've been working toward coming up with the draft system plan, including updating our long-range plan, obtaining revenue authority from the state legislature so we could go to the voters, to see if the voters would like to support additional high-capacity transit, and we are completing our system plan currently, expecting to go to the ballot measure in November. So a lot of work over the last several years, and we are coming to a close on putting together this plan. So why the plan, the draft plan that I'll be briefly sharing before you? The Sound Transit Board has proposed a truly ambitious plan. It's a 25-year plan that will improve the quality of life throughout the region, the economy, and the environment. As you may know, our region and cities within our region are, in many cases, decades behind many other regions throughout the U.S. in terms of mass transit investments. With the draft plan, there will be no doubt changes, but with the light rail extensions included in it and on top of the light rail projects underway, we would result in a 112-mile light rail system throughout the region, which would then start to put our region on par with major cities such as Washington DC's metro system, San Francisco's BART system, and Chicago CTA system, once the system was complete, is complete. So now, getting into a brief overview of what's actually included in the plan. First, because many of these projects have, take a number of years to plan and develop and implement, so the plan includes some early deliverables primarily focused on bus transit to provide some relief while these larger capital projects are in development. And so just one I'm highlighting, as part of the 522 BRT project, we do include parking expansion in Lake Forest Park in Bothell, and then, and Kenmore as well. So this would be an early deliverable in the 2019 to 2024 timeframe, and include here are some of the other early deliverable projects. And then the light rail projects, the draft plan includes 58 miles of light rail extensions, so that we would have a light rail extending all the way from Everett down through Tacoma. In the state of Seattle, we would have Everett from Ballard to downtown Seattle, a second light rail tunnel through downtown Seattle, and then light rail to West Seattle. On the east side of Lake Washington, we have light rail from Overlake Transit Center to downtown Redmond, from Bellevue to Issaquah, and then an extension of the Tacoma Link Project to the Tacoma Community College. So as you also, I'm sure, are aware, the draft plan includes bus rapid transit projects for the first time, getting into bus rapid transit in a fairly large way in the draft plan. I'll talk a little bit more about both of these, actually, in just a moment. Right now, the current completion date of these two projects is the year 2024. The, looking at the 522 BRT project, in particular in terms of the completion date, we understand that ideally, the completion date would mesh up with the opening of the light rail station at 145th and I-5, which is 2023. So our board has challenged us to look at many of our projects, in particular, some of the large light rail projects, to see if it's possible to reduce the project delivery timeframe for, through things such as increased cooperation with the jurisdictions and a number of other things that staff has been taking a hard look at. But we just want to acknowledge that the ideal perspective from jurisdictions, and also it offers some benefits to Sound Transit, would be to have the BRT connect, be able to connect when that light rail station opens in 2023. Okay, so focusing a bit more on the bus rapid transit project on 522, going to the light rail station at 145th, I guess, first, I just want to acknowledge the tremendous work that the City of Bothell has undertaken in cooperation with the City of Kenmore, Lake Forest Park and Shoreline, to really come together over the last year or two, to present a very united front on this project, really very impressive, and so I think it's widely acknowledged that your, these jurisdictions, all of your jurisdictions did a really fantastic job in letting your wishes be known and loudly heard to the board for this, this particular project. So hats off to, to, to City of Bothell and the other cities along the corridor. This project would, will connect the communities along the north end of Lake Washington to the light rail spine at 145th and I-5. It also provides a connection to the BRT line along I-405, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. Along 522, the project completes the, the gaps in the existing business access transit lanes, which also includes a enhanced transit center at the UW Bothell, some on-street improvements along 185th to improve pedestrian connections. What else? A BRT stop actually very close to the building we're in now, along 185th as well, and all of the BRT stations do include some access improvements, you know, to be determined to enable better access to the BRT stations. One note, in the draft plan, the capital improvements included in the plan are from the UW Bothell to the west, to the light rail station I-5 and 405. Currently, the draft plan does not include any capital improvements between UW Bothell and Woodinville. It does include service, BRT service using existing bus stops at a lower level of frequency. The BRT line would have 10-minute headways throughout the day between UW Bothell and the light rail station from UW Bothell to Woodinville, the current assumption it would be 20-minute headways. I think I mentioned, we have three parking garages, each of 300 spaces as well, included in the 522 project. The I-405 Bus Rapid Transit Project is a bus rapid transit line from Lynwood Transit Center to Bellevue, and then finishing up in Burien. It would be a system of 10-minute headways. I do want to acknowledge that north of Totem Lake, the BRT system would use the general purpose lanes on I-405 in order to serve the existing outside flyer stamp, flyer, flyer stops on the on-ramps at, at 185th. The stops would be upgraded, the existing stops would be upgraded with shelters, real-time arrival information, lighting, and signage. The assumption right now is that the BRT service would stay on I-405, so people wishing to go to UW Bothell would transfer at the station at I-405 to the 522 BRT service. We know there may be some concerns about that, and we would just acknowledge that there's still time to let the Sound Transit Board know what your concerns may be, so, so that's something you may want to look into. The draft plan also includes improvements to the Sounder Commuter Rail System, including an extension from Lakewood to DuPont, and capital improvements on the South Sounder Line. And then finally, because we know, even though this is a very bold and ambitious plan, it will not solve all of the region's long-term transit challenges, so there are several studies included in the, in the system plan, including one looking at east-west high-capacity transit connections, so looking at the quarters, including 522 and 520, and possibly in between, to look at future high-capacity transit in that east-west section. This would be, this would then potentially result in the implementation of that infrastructure in a future system plan, like an ST IV and so forth. Project delivery timeline, I did mention that in going out to the public over the past month or so, certainly, one of the biggest things that we've heard is a concern about the long delivery timeframe for some of these projects, and so the board has challenged us to take a hard look at whether we may, in some circumstances, be able to reduce the project delivery timeframe, so we certainly expect that you will see changes in the final system plan for the delivery date for some of the projects in the plan. It's also very important to talk about funding. The current draft plan would result in an increase in taxes for Puget Sound, the residents of the Sound Transit District, on the order of about $200 for, per year for the typical, typical adult in the region. The Sound Transit Board right now is working on the financial plan for the, for the system plan, as well as looking at policy issues related to issues such as access, transit-oriented development, sustainability, affordable housing, and so forth. So what's next? We're, we are in the process of compiling the tremendous amount of input we've received on the draft plan. We are, as I mentioned, we are looking at the, seeing if it's possible to reduce the project delivery timeframes. The board will be working on some policy issues. We expect the board will adopt a final system plan in June, and then in November, the voters of the Sound Transit District will have an opportunity to weigh in on whether they support the ST III plan. So thank you very much, and I wasn't sure if we're going to take questions now, or go through the?
I think it's probably a good idea to ask questions now, if that's okay. Is everybody okay with that? Ask each, okay. So questions from council? Nobody? There we go. Deputy Mayor?
So in looking at the bus rapid transit, I don't know if you can bring that slide up again.
The 405 or the 505?
405, sorry. So I guess I would argue that's not true bus rapid transit if it's on a general purpose lane. I had a briefing with WashDOT this morning, and they talked about the possibility of getting some inline stations in Canyon Park and 522, and I'm wondering if there is some way for you to work together to make that happen. I don't know if you've discussed that at all, but I just, to me, that, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be shown as one continuous bus rapid transit route when it's truly not.
I'm not sure if, I'm not the project manager for the 405 BRT line, it's, I could get back to you and tell you if those discussions have occurred. And again, although we, we are closing out the public input period, certainly, you would be welcome to send another letter with additional suggestions such as this.
I'm not sure if you, if you're familiar, but there seems to be a problem with completing the loop around the lake, and we already are down a lane, and so anytime you exacerbate the problem, you know, everything gets worse. You know, a case of like 2 plus 2 equals 10 kind of thing, so I would encourage you to, to look at that. So, I would encourage you to, to look at that. I think that's a big concern for our community, and it's, and it's not just for our community, it's a system, and if the system doesn't work, then it doesn't work for people in Kirkland or Everett trying to go up and down the 405 corridor. And we do have two, a, you know, well, a college here that people are trying to, it's a commuter college, so obviously, we want them to commute by bus, preferably.
Yeah, I can find out what kind of discussions have taken place and get back to Sherman, then he could share kind of what...
I was hoping if you could combine your efforts, that maybe that could happen, and more quickly. Thank you for your time, though, I appreciate the...
You're welcome, very welcome.
Slideshow.
Councilmember Freed.
Great, I'm, the growth in this region looks to be extraordinary, for sure. So, one thing I'm questioning regarding the taxing area, is that strictly in King County? How far of a halo do we have into Snohomish County?
Well, I will, I'm going to put up the map, it's a little hard to see. So, it's, it's a little hard to see, but the, the white line represents the taxing district within the region, so the green is outside of our district. Snohomish County is the, is the, our smallest taxing district. I don't know if this helped, that helps, the map helps you.
Yeah, I'm just curious with growth, as cities, we have the responsibility per the GMA to take certain amounts of growth, we're one of the designated cities, to take growth. Do you work hand-in-hand with cities to encourage more dense development around the light rail? Or are you counting on the cities to see what's coming and plan accordingly?
I, I, we have a, we have Transit Oriented Development Group, and as we do project development, I, we work hand-in-hand ultimately, the cities that need to implement the policies related to land use, but you know, we know that there are a number of cities that are, you know, it's, it's an era where cities are eagerly looking toward having more high-capacity transit, and are eagerly looking to change the land use to be more transit supportive. So, it's, it's not, we're not finding it a tough sell in many cases. It's not always easy for cities to, you know, in some cases, it may, they may, you know, there may be a sense that they're going out ahead of where the people are, but you know, to accommodate this amount of growth, we certainly are doing what we can to work with the cities to realize that.
It seems like a lot of efforts going into the bus rapid transit, the light rail and transportation as a whole. If we all believe collectively that the environment is important, and that having, you know, these spines that we want to build on, I think it's difficult to talk about more growth in a city, to put more density there, but the reality is, if we're going to see a million people over the next 30 years here in the Seattle region, we need the cities to get very serious about having more dense development around these light rail systems. And so, some of that may require some rezoning or some strategic planning, and leadership in that regard would be important collectively as a region. So, I appreciate that. In regards to the bus rapid transit, I've seen the presentation before regarding how effective that can be if you don't have light rail to pull people together. What truly is the definition of bus rapid transit that, if it's in a general purpose lane, is that truly considered bus rapid transit, or?
You know, there is a spectrum for bus rapid transit, I mean, anywhere from providing bus priority treatments in mixed-use traffic, that would be at the, certainly at the low end, to a fully exclusive busway that would, you know, be just like a light rail except for its buses. So, certainly, the section we're talking about is, would definitely be on the, on the, on the low end, certainly acknowledging that, but you know, for the corridors whole, it, it, much of the rest of the corridor operates a little, you know, more in the middle.
Is there a term that can be used for the hybrid if it's not truly a bus rapid transit with a dedicated lane? Is it just a bus transit system?
Well, I'm not, I don't know if any of my transit colleagues have a hybrid suggestion.
Well, I mean, I see some positive designs regarding, like you go down to the Wayne Curve, and there's a dedicated lane to allow buses to go through, so they don't have to stop at the stoplight. More of those type of things that you can encourage in cities, I imagine you try to take every opportunity.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, so, interesting. Thank you so much for your leadership in this regard, and I hope that we can collectively look over the next 20 to 30 years of growth here, and as cities truly speak to it.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I would like to also echo Deputy Mayor Dewar's concerns about the bus rapid transit plan for 405. If there are not inline stations on 405, then it isn't bus rapid transit. And currently, Bothell commuters and people trying to commute through Bothell have suffered greatly from the express toll lanes and the, the, the infrastructure deficit that has been created just south of 522, when the number of lanes, five, narrows down to three. And so then, we're going to put buses in a so-called bus rapid transit system that's weaving in and out of the general purpose lanes. And I just, I fail to see how that, how that's going to improve transit for Bothell riders. I feel like those inline stations at Canyon Park, at 195th, at 160th are all very important, and we need to find a way to get those in, into the plan. And I do have a suggestion for that, for, for council later on, because we have fixed resources, and so if that is something that's important for the commuters on the 405 corridor, then I think we need to look at other projects within Bothell that we can shift resources from to make that a reality. And so, you mentioned briefly that the 535 would not be stopping at the campus under this new proposal. So, can you, can you tell me, so, right now, we have the 532 and the 535 that run on 405. And so, what, 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 what will the 532 and 535 route be under this proposal if you're removing it, if you're removing the campus stop? And then, can you explain how commuters who currently access the campus on the 535 stop, how they'll access it after this plan is implemented?
Well, the current, the current assumption for the corridor is that people who want to access the UW Bothell campus would have to transfer to the 522 BRT line. Now, as the project goes into project development, there may be an opportunity to, to revisit it, as Sound Transit develops our service implementation plan, there may be an opportunity to look at that, but you know, I guess I would certainly encourage, if this is a concern of the city of Bothell, to make sure the Sound Transit Board is aware of your concern as soon as possible.
So how would a rider transfer to the 522 line from 535?
Well, there will be, let me see. So, the, this BRT line would have the service continuing, you know, past the UW Bothell, and using that same interchange that the 405 BRT will have a station pair. So, at that interchange, they can transfer from the 405 BRT to the 522 BRT line.
At some connection point on, at the intersection of 522 and 405?
Yes, there will be, and then during project development, you know, we'd look at, you know, how to make that a, you know, as good a connection as possible, but yeah, people would transfer between the two BRT lines.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just having a really hard time visualizing...
Oh, well, not, not, not 522, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the, the BRT, the 522 BRT line is what I'm calling, but not at 522, but at the, the same location along I-405, where you'll have the UW Bothell station. The, the route that serves 522 will also get on I-405 at that same location to then head on to Woodenville, so it would be at that, at that location. So basically, at the same location. 195th, yes, it's not 195th.
All right, well, I guess it would be helpful to have some clarity about if I'm a, if I'm a rider on 535 and I'm heading north on 405, how am I going to get to the campus? How am I going to get the campus if I'm heading south on 405? I think that has to be, that has to be really clear, because I'm not, I'm not visualizing it at the, at the moment. So, we have a pretty ambitious investment that's over, looks like, was it 30 years?
25.
25 years. What is the plan for replacing the infrastructure in 40 years when replacement is needed? This is a, a pretty capital-intensive program where you're laying down a lot of light rail and a lot of stations, and this is, all of these facilities are going to wear out. So what is the plan for replacement? Is any of this money set aside for replacement costs, or will that be a new bond at some point in the future?
Well, that's actually a great question. At our most recent Sound Transit, I believe it was a capital committee meeting, the capital committee had a discussion about ongoing operations and maintenance of the system, and having that be the agency's highest priority as, you know, we complete these projects to ensure that, you know, we are able to continue collecting revenue such that we're able to maintain all of this infrastructure, operate and maintain all of this infrastructure. So it's, the board is going to, you know, over the next, I don't know if it'll be this month or next month, passably, take action on, I'm not sure if it'll be a policy action, but to ensure that we do have the ability, the revenue, to continue operating and maintaining the system as we need to. So we're, you know, I think in a way, if, if we do that, we'll be kind of on the, on the leading edge of being very proactive about ensuring that we are able to maintain the system for the users in the region.
So just that I understand, and this is my last question, you're suggesting that the board is going to be, is going to be looking at making the, the, the system through its fares be self-supporting of its future maintenance and, and replacement?
Not, not through, not through the fares, so, so as, as we complete projects, then the, we are in a position where we can roll back taxes because we don't need to, you know, collect the same amount of tax revenue once we've built these projects. What the, what the board will strive to do is ensure that the tax revenues that we continue to collect enable us to operate and maintain the system, so it's not rolled back so far that we are unable to maintain the system going out into the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you for your presentation. I just, most of my questions have been answered, but I just, I had a couple other follow-up ones. You had mentioned ridership by 2040, it being between 470 and 580,000?
Yeah, I'll put that, yes.
So, can you tell us how that kind of relates to our general area? What the increase in ridership will be for our area based on this plan?
I can't off the top of my head, but I will get back to our modeling group and see if we can provide information more specific to the city of Bothell.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be good to see kind of the north end here, what that kind of looks like for the, for the riderships, and what you guys think that will be by 2040. You mentioned 20-minute headway or headtimes?
Between UW Bothell and Woodenville, we have 10-minute headways between UW Bothell and I-5 Light Rail Station, but in the current draft plan, but between UW Bothell and Woodenville, it would be, in the draft plan, it's 20-minute headways, assumed.
So, that's 20 minutes to go from Woodenville to Bothell, UW Bothell?
So, what it means is every, every 20 minutes, there would be, a bus would arrive every, every 20 minutes, 20 minutes between buses.
Okay, and what would, what do you anticipate the time would be in that same 20 minutes to get to the light rail on I-5?
I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
So if I want to take, if I want to go from Bothell to light rail on I-5, how long is it going to take me to get there?
The, well, the headways, the buses will come every 10 minutes, and let me see if I can, I'm not remembering off the top of my head what the travel time is. 28 minutes from Bothell to the light rail station, and 45 minutes from Woodenville to the light rail station.
Okay, so 45 from Woodenville, 28 from Bothell?
Yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned parking spaces?
Yes.
And that's, would that be the north-end park and rides that are running along 522 that you were referring to, is having additional spaces?
Yes, 300 additional spaces in Bothell, 300 additional in Kenmore, and Lake Forest Park does not currently have a park and ride, but they would have a 300 stall park and ride garage in Lake Forest Park.
Okay, so that would be our downtown park and ride would be adding 300 spaces to that?
Well, the location of where that park and, parking garage would be determined during project development.
Okay. And then, you had mentioned Transit Center UW Bothell. What does that look like?
That would be a location where multiple buses can come in, and there will include some layover, so it's, you know, a little different than an on-street BRT station, which will have a pair of stations on either side. This is kind of one central place with a central loading platform, serves as a, as a, as a transfer point, as a, as a layover spot as well.
Would that be able to feed like a center lane BRT on 405?
This would be off of, this would be closer to the Bothell campus, not, it's, it's not, it wouldn't be local, we're not assuming it would be very, it would, it would not, it would not be at I-405, it would be at the...
On the campus?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming in, I'll try to make this quick, because we have about 25 minutes for the other two agencies and questions, so, so it's a $50 billion proposition. And I'm glad that you brought that up, so headways, just so everybody, everybody understands that's how long you wait between buses?
Yes.
Okay, and you did say it's 10-minute wait on 405?
Oh, yes, on the, on the 405 BRT project, yeah, that's, that would also be 10-minute headways.
And then it was, I thought it was 20, I'm sorry, on 522, 20-minute waits?
So, on the I-405 BRT project, the headways would be 10 minutes. On the 522 BRT project, the headways would be 10 minutes between UW Bothell and the light rail station, but between UW Bothell and Woodenville, the headways would be 20 minutes.
Okay. Hold on a second. Okay, and then, is that all the time, or is there a certain hours a day?
Well, it's not 24 hours. It's, it's, it is all day, but I will have to, I can't recall exactly when, not, not all night long, but, yeah.
Or maybe it was, it was less frequent at night or something like that, or?
Well, I mean, in the, at the middle of the night, I, I don't believe we'll have any service at all, but I don't know the, the timeframe for, for when it stops and when it starts in the morning.
So, and you do provide one of the best bus services in the city, I've used it to get down to Seattle, so thank you for what's there. I just have noticed, you know, when you're waiting, and hope this would obviously fix that, that, you know, three buses go by that are going to a different place than our buses, So, the draft plan, is there any chance that, or it changes typically before it's actually final? Is there, what's kind of the, on the horizon for opportunities for projects to potentially be removed from the plan?
Well, you know, the board is starting to digest the public input right now, and we know that there, there certainly has been interest in adding more projects to the plan. Haven't heard as much about removing projects from the plan, but the, there's no doubt that there will be changes to the plan between now and June.
June's when it's solid?
Yes.
Okay. And then I've heard, and I think that's what Councilmember McNeil's going to bring up, but I heard Sound Cities Association is working on a letter, because there's some concern around whether parking should be in or out of the plan. And I just wanted to weigh in on that, that we desperately need parking out here to actually use the system. We can't, that you can't just walk to a bus station in this part of the, your service area. It's, it's literally a necessity around here, basically, to need a place to park your vehicle and, and use the system. So, you'll see, I hope the council will be agreeing to sign on to the Sound Cities letter, but I just want to let you know, from my experience, you can't use the bus system here without parking, so.
Thank you.
And I think that's it. And I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll get the King County Metro's presentation up here.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Schaefer. I'm here from King County Metro, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you about our draft plan. And it's exciting also, I'm really happy that we're here right after Sound Transit because we've been working with them quite a bit as we've developed our plan. So this is one of our first long-range plan in a long time, and it looks a little bit different than some of the plans we've done in the past. As Sherman mentioned, we just released the draft plan on the website about two weeks ago, and I'm going to provide you a quick overview of what's in it. I'll try to go quickly because I realize I think we're running a little over time. And at the very end, depending on how much time or detail we want to get into, there is some, I've pulled some attention to some of the specific routes that are currently proposed in our draft network, just to highlight those. But some of these stats you've already heard, but why now? It's the time to plan, to do a long-range plan. There's a lot happening in our region, there's a lot of projects going on. We're anticipating a lot of growth, 850,000 jobs, a million more people. You've heard some of this from Sound Transit. But we are also very interested in making sure that we have a plan to, to develop a vision for a transit system that will accommodate the growth and the demand, will promote equity and social justice, will connect to Link and the other regional high-capacity transit services that are planned and proposed, can care about the environment, you know, looking to reduce emissions, and adopt emerging technologies. To reach the vision that's in our plan, we, it would require about a 70% growth over the amount of service that we currently have today. And again, that's by 2040. Wait, am I going the wrong way? All right. Some of the benefits we would see if our, our vision, as our vision is realized, we'll be looking to double the transit ridership in King County. That's not just on Metro, but that's all the transit services in King County would see a doubling. One of the, one of the statistics that I find particularly attractive about our vision is that we will triple the number of people who will have access to frequent transit service, so that's service that comes every 15 minutes or, or more often. We'll go from, we have 20% today can, is within what we call walking distance. So 70% of the population in King County would be within walking distance of frequent transit service at the end of this. Again, other pieces of this, of our plan, we would see a higher percentage of people taking the bus to get to work. We really emphasize frequent connections to the Light Rail system. Low-income and minority populations would certainly benefit from this. 85% of residents in those groups would have access to frequent transit service, and we would see emissions reduced. So one of the big components of our plan is the service network. There's three types of service that we talk about. There's frequent transit service, express, and local. The frequent transit service, which is, which is a big, sort of the workhorse of the system, we would see a great increase in this, and this would include expanding Rapid Ride, which is on the spectrum of BRT, but it's on the more arterial, lower end of the BRT. But there's lots of capital improvements that are associated with Rapid Ride. We would see 20 new lines and 300 miles of new or enhanced service in the frequent network. The express service, now this is a, a service that we, is not as common for us to provide. A lot of the Sound Transit express services fall into this category, but it would be two-way, all-day express service, covering larger distances with a little bit farther stop spacing, connecting the big centers for both growth centers and urban and industrial centers. Local service is sort of the fabric underneath these other types of service, and this would really be a combination of, of fixed route service running into the neighborhoods, but also we would really be looking at expanding our alternative and flexible services to connect people to the regional spines, to reach, you know, what kind of service makes more sense in the neighborhoods? How do we get people to transit? How do we help cover those first-and-last-mile connections? It's an expansion of the program that Sherman mentioned that we've been looking at here. There's been a lot of work on an alternative services program that would provide connection to the UW Bothell from Bothell and Woodenville. That's undergoing right now, and there would be more of those in the future. So combined, these are the three components, as I mentioned, frequent, express, and local to make up our service network. This is an example of demonstrating the distance of how far you could get today in up to 60 minutes and how far you could get in 2040 with our vision in place in 60 minutes in the future. And the, the bubble definitely expands, and you can see some key dots where you're showing where we're, we're really taking advantage of the regional system that's in place. So along with our plan, you know, service is a big component of what we do, but we recognize capital is an important part of it. It takes, you know, capital investments can really help keep buses moving faster, for example. A lot of your discussion about what's happening on 405, making sure there are bus lanes to help keep buses moving. Metro's looking at some of those types of investments, but we're more focused on arterials, but we'll be looking at bus lanes, signal priority, also things like how do we get people on and off the buses faster, maybe off-board fare payment readers. We'd be looking at other types of roadway investments to keep the buses moving. Really, we're just looking to be a little bit more of a player in the capital programs in the future. Again, this would also be working really closely with jurisdictions as partners, financial partners, but also partners as, as owners and governors of the roadway and of the right-of-way. And our plan, we'd have a lot of, we'd be looking at really expanding our range of options. This is looking at some of the flexible services I mentioned. And, and really recognizing that there's, as all the transit agencies are making improvements into the future, we really want to make sure that they work together well, that the connections work well. And, and being able, so for, from a rider's perspective, that it's a very well-connected system, it's not a, a collection of different services, but they really work well together. Also looking at, to increase accessibility, how can we do a better job or more affordable job of pair of transit in the future? Being able to provide more options to more people. And what other products are coming online? There's lots of things going on in the transit industry these days, and we're really trying to stay abreast of those innovations, whether it means creative and new partnerships, how do we look to transit network companies, things like Uber and Lyft? How do we help them fill those gaps? You know, I've heard, you know, some of the concerns here is how do you get to transit? How do you get to that regional system, particularly in areas like this? Parking is one answer, but maybe there's other opportunities to find those, those, to cover those gaps creatively through, whether it be taxi services or things like that, what we can find in a more creative manner, or a more affordable manner. And again, really trying to make our future system easy, safe, and comfortable. New and better information, you know, a lot of people have smartphones, things like one bus away. How do we empower people to really know how to, how to use the system better, when the buses are coming? How to use technology to do that? Again, making those connections with other systems and services easier, making, getting on the bus faster and easier? How do we design buses so they're easier to get on? How do we, how do they look on the inside so they're easier to move around? Easier for different populations, people in wheelchairs, people with strollers? All of that, all of those components contribute to making the system easier to use and faster. And, and, and also the passenger facilities. How do those facilities accommodate all the passengers we're going to envision in the future, but also the connections between the bus and the rail and other systems? So access to transit is a big component. There's been lots of thought about access in the region. King County Metro just finished an access to transit study. The Puget Center Regional Council is facilitating a regional access assessment. We are, all the transit agencies are learning from these processes, what contributes to good access. And we're really trying to fold a lot of that into our long-range planning, recognizing we want to improve bike and walk access, recognizing we want to work with the cities as they develop their law, their land use plans, how do we leverage that? And how do we work with jurisdictions to, to support environments that make it easier to get to transit? Park and ride, transit parking has a, has a definite role in our future. Again, in certain targeted to areas where maybe it isn't so easy to walk and bike. And then again, transit-oriented development, how do you help create housing in areas that are supported by transit? Transit hubs and stations are a big part of going forward, particularly as we look at a system that is intended to be well-connected. Again, you know, some of our, some of our stations are going to see boardings of maybe even 70,000 people a day. Right now, some of our highest boardings we see are about 10,000 a day at stations. So we're expecting a huge growth in passenger activities, but also connections between bus and rail. So thinking about how we plan now to make sure those facilities are designed well between now and 2040 is a big part of what we're talking about. We've been talking a lot to Sound Transit about that as they've gone forward with their system planning. Park and rides, touched on those a bit. You know, we recognize those definitely have a role in, in certain areas, areas where walk and bike access isn't easy. Kathy mentioned there's a, a number of planned and proposed projects through Sound Transit for parking in the corridors. We've really built our plan to complement what's been identified in the regional plan. So Metro's recognizing that we have a share, we have an interest in, in investing in parking as well going into the future. And also looking at other alternatives to help improve or increase parking supply. We'll certainly be looking at lease lot opportunities, shared parking, how can we work with multifamily housing places? For example, we have some pilot projects going on right now, considering opportunities for how do we manage the parking we have? How do we make sure the parking is being used in the, in the best way? So I'm, you know, looking at where parking is today, where could it be better situated in the future? Lots of things, lots of consideration. TOD, again, I, I mentioned, well, it's certainly a component of as we look forward, working with our partners and jurisdictions and our other transit agencies, how to, to make that happen as we, as we look to interact with folks about development in the future. And then our plan does talk about the nuts and bolts. With an expansion that we envision in our, by 2040, we'll certainly need workforce to support that, employees, we'll need more buses. We expect our system, our fleet would be expanded by about 500 buses. Consideration about what would happen with our trolley network, making sure we keep that running and filling in gaps. Layover, this is one of the areas that, that a lot of folks don't necessarily think about, but it's, it's a critical component, but how do we provide space for buses to park in between runs? And then bus spaces and support facilities, we'll be looking to add two to three new bus spaces to support our fleet. And then the implementation. So we are, our plan demonstrates our vision, but it's not intended just to sit in the shelf, the shelf. As soon as our plan is done and adopted, we're really going to be looking at how do we take that plan and turn it into actionable items? How do we turn that into our action-oriented six-year plans? And how are we going to work with jurisdictions and other transit agencies as we start to, to fill in the details about what our long-range plan is and how it's going to do? And so that will be the, what we'll be turning our attention to as long as, once the long-range plan is adopted. And then again, so here I can do a time check, but I did want to recognize that we have heard, we've worked with, with folks like Sherman, we have, we've had a very active technical advisory group, committee, which has been representative of jurisdictions across King County. We have had a number of moments where we've heard input, we've been actually to the councils before at our last stage of public outreach. We're really out here to hear input. This is some of the things we've heard so far. And again, this is our draft plan. We will be asking for comments until June 1st, but these are some of the issues we've heard. Not all of them have been addressed in the draft plan because some of them have come in since then. But we recognize that growth is targeted to Bothell, the downtown Canyon Park and North Creek areas. We've heard an interest in express connections to Seattle and the East Side Cities, connections across the county line, particularly between downtown Bothell and Canyon Park. Local service to, to connect the residential areas to the frequent and the express service on the 522 and I-405 corridors. And that parking, you know, we've, we've definitely heard an interest in parking. And so here I will turn to you for a time check. I don't know that we want to walk through all these routes, and so I could stop here. Or if you have some specific questions about corridors, we might be able to delve into this. But just to sum, my last slide actually is the one that has where we are in the process. Again, we are, we've just completed a round of public open houses, and we are actively out in all the communities. This is my second council meeting this week. I have colleagues who are out at a number of places tonight. We are hoping to touch all the jurisdictions in the next, by the end of the next week or two. We are accepting comments till June 1st. And to find out more about it, if you want more than you've learned from this presentation, we have lots of information online, including a dynamic map, where you can go in and look at what routes are there, what, what the draft plan proposes. And again, this is a draft plan, so we are certainly welcoming comments at this point that we will take into consideration in our final is due. Our, our timeline is to wrap it up in early July for, or this summer for transmittal to the King County Council. So with that, I'll pause.
Yep. Because we only have 10 more minutes. So, and we have another sound, or community transit here as well.
Okay.
So, community transit is here, and if you, they can give you a quick update on where Swift 2 is, but because they have come a couple times already and decided, you know, presented the program and where they are, they're, they're really here to answer any specific questions that you may have of that, or if, they don't have to present if they, you know, if you don't need that, because they've got, the plan is just moving along.
No way, we want to hear from, please, we have, let's, can we take that? And then we'll do King County and Swift questions, okay?
That's fine. And if there's other, the, the rest of the King County presentation is, there are a lot of, you know, specific routes that there, that they had included, but we can, I could share that with you.
Yeah, that'd be great to share with the council.
Okay.
Please.
We didn't preload mine, so we're. Good evening. My name's June Duvall. I'm the manager of strategic planning and grants for community transit. I was here about a year ago to tell you what we were looking at with our Swift Bus Rapid Transit. So I'll give you a very fast update. As a quick reminder, the line will go from approximately the Boeing plant, right across the street from the Boeing plant in South Everett, utilizing Airport Road, 128th and SR 527, down to the Canyon Park Park and Ride. The line is 12.5 miles long. There will be 15 station pairs, and we coordinate with each of the jurisdictions. We are working actively with your jurisdiction on a partnership agreement that allows us to proceed with the project. So where we're at, we've got a couple of major capital components of this project. The first one is a new transit center at the northern end of the route, directly across the street from the Boeing facility. So directly across the street from Boeing, there's a vacant parcel of land that belongs to the PUD. We've identified that property for a new transit center where all of the routes that serve Boeing and the new Swift Bus Rapid Transit will all come together. This is at 30% design. Our environmental NEPA process has been completed on this property. Our property line negotiations with the PUD are complete. Our appraisals for the property are complete and have been submitted to FTA for review and approval. We're working on a memorandum of understanding with the city of Everett. What you see in the red on this property, on this picture, is actually city right-of-way. And the city of Everett is dedicating their right-of-way to the project, to, as part of their local match. And our board has approved the task order to go to 60% design, which is now underway. The second major component of the project is a widening project at the approaches to I-5. We're not touching I-5 or the interchange at all, but we're widening the approaches in both directions in order to give a transit-only lane. It's actually a bat lane, so right-turning vehicles could use it, but the transit vehicles will be able to get through the traffic. And if the light is red, they will get a queue jump so that the bus will get a, a green before the rest of the traffic. There will be a refuge on the other side of the intersection in case the light is green when the bus approaches, so it has a place to wait until it can merge back into traffic. And again, we're at 30%, 30% design on that part of the project is complete. Our environmental NEPA process has been complete. It has been submitted to WashDOT for review and comment. We have received WashDOT's comments on this. The task order has been approved, and we are underway at 60% design. We are also. We are also beginning our right-of-way activities and appraisals for all of the properties that will be affected in this part of the corridor. The third major component of the project is building the 30 stations. So, all along the corridor, station pairs at major intersections. We've identified every one of those intersections. We've also identified the area improvements such as additional sidewalks, additional queue jumps where the bus will get priority to get through the intersection, additional lane widenings and, and signal timing in order to make sure that the buses have priority. Again, for all of these stations, we are at 30% design on, and now underway to 60% design. We have completed our environmental. We're coordinating with WashDOT in each of the jurisdictions. And again, we are beginning right-of-way activities and appraisals. So, we have made contact with all the property owners along the corridor who will be affected by the property, by the project, I'm sorry. On our vehicles, that's our, our other major capital component. In order to build this, we need to buy more vehicles. And it, it's surprising to many people, but generally buying a transit vehicle is about a two-year process. They don't have a lot where you can just go, go pick them out. So, we released our RFP in January. We received the bids in April. We are now reviewing with contractors and demo buses. We expect to award a contract by June 3rd. And then we will ask FTA for a letter of no prejudice in order to place the order before we actually have our grant in place. So, all told, we are proceeding with 60% design on all aspects of the project. We have begun our right-of-way acquisitions all along the corridor. We are working on our third-party agreements with all of the jurisdictions, including Bothell, working with FTA in order to obtain a Small Starts Grant, and we will be ordering our buses by the end of the year. So, that is a really, really fast update on where we're at, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, I appreciate the very fast updates. Sorry that we had to rush you.
That's okay.
Deputy Mary, I know you had a question from King County. We're going to ask questions of both, if that's okay, if you guys just stay up there and we'll...
We're friends.
Yeah, okay, cool. You guys are working together, good.
Hi, so I had seen a similar presentation at the Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting about a month and a half ago. The map that I had a serious reaction to is not in this one.
Well, may, was it not in there or did we just not get to it?
I don't know. So, it was particularly around Rapid, what's it called, Rapid Ride on 405?
I'm sorry, Rapid Ride on?
On 405.
The Bus Rapid Transit?
Between Kirkland, yeah. No, Rapid Ride. So, what I saw in the map was that Rapid Ride stopped in Kirkland and did not continue up through Bothell. And I'm wondering if, when you asked if we had questions around specific routes, that's my question. Has anything changed in regards to that? This is another gap in, in Bothell service that I'm looking at.
And when we can take that comment, I'm not 100% sure. I pulled out some routes, so we don't have all of them. The dynamic net map is another way to look at that. There is actually an internet connection, we could also pull that up and look.
So, I, I made my comment about a month and a half ago and I just wondered if there was any update or if we were still looking at a 2040 gap in Rapid Ride service from Kirkland North to Bothell.
So, let me see, Kirkland. So, we have, right now, we have a, there is a local route from Kirkland to Bothell in the draft plan, which is the route in front of you. Why don't I just quickly go, so these, yeah, so there, there's a, currently, so right now, the, these are the highlights. So, we had, there's an express route that goes from UW-Bothell to First Hill along 522 corridor and I-5. There is a frequent route that connects to the UW in Seattle Campus from UW-Bothell. And this is the, the Sound Transit BRT we wanted to acknowledge. And there is a local route connecting Woodinville by way of Bothell to Kenmore. UW-Bothell to Kirkland on a local route. And I think there are some routes that are not shown here. The UW-Bothell to Totem Lake. But then we're also acknowledging that there is a proposal for BRT on 405 and that we are providing connections to that BRT, which would then provide quick service between Bothell, Brickyard, Totem Lake, and also up to Canyon Park. So, we're trying to coordinate with those investments that have been identified and have been proposed.
I understand, but that goes all the way down 405, correct? So, what I'm trying to establish is there's another service gap.
Okay.
And I just wanted to mention that because, you know, lack of, lack of a lane, lack of bus service, it all adds up to exacerbating our traffic issues. My other comment was regarding, you had discussed park and ride. And I'm, I'm wondering, I would love to see some transit-oriented development perhaps above a 522 park and ride parking garage. And I don't know how or what the process is to try to pursue something like that.
Right. So, I think it, it's great to hear those comments. And then I think as those opportunities, or as we move forward with the implementation plans, as we get our long-range plan in place, I think we'll certainly be looking at opportunities. And then as we hear and work with jurisdictions, I think the, I think the first step is just starting the conversation and hearing the interest, and then you start to look at the opportunities that might exist along the corridor.
Okay.
So, I think that's, that's a great comment for us to hear that you're interested in TOD there. And then it's us, but it's also working with, with a lot of other players in terms of getting it started. But I think that we hear that and we have that, we, we're aware of that, then I think that's a great first step.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm very interested in expanding that park and ride and getting some transit-oriented development there. And my, my final question is currently, there's no, what I understand, there's no weekend service from the main UW campus to UW-Bothell. And I'm wondering if...
Oh, that, I think that has already, ah, that has, I mean, I, in the future, these are all-day two-way services. So, they're, in the future, that changes. There's definitely plans to add weekend service.
Do we know when in the future? Is that the 2040 plan or is that...
So, we break it out by 2025 and 2040.
Okay.
Again, that would be on the dynamic map because you can pull up what's in place by 2025 and what's in place by 2040. And I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head. But the one, one solution to that would be certainly on the weekends. I mean, we will be, I imagine the 522 corridor itself, the service on there, the levels are going to go, I mean, that's one of our strongest corridors, the highest ridership corridor. So, those services will go up, but with the, the 145th BRT in place, you will have connection to the 145th Station on Light Rail, which will provide very fast, frequent connections to the UW.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with the expansion of the 522 service. I just think there's a, there seems to be a lack of recognition that, that 405 is actually a spine as well that needs to be serviced from end to end.
I'm sorry, did I misunderstand? I thought you were talking about UW-Bothell to UW Campus.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I thought we were wrapping it up.
Sorry, no, no, thank you.
No, I think it's, I think the, the expansion of 522 is, is great. And I, I rode that route for many years on the bus and I'm a big believer in transit. So, I thank you for, for all your work. I believe in your service. I just, the 405 is, is kind of an issue. And like I said, it's not just about Bothell, it's about commuters all up and down that 405 spine. Thank you.
Great, thank you, I'll note that.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I just wanted to, is there, do we have a dynamic map? What, what is that located?
So, it's on our website, which is, it's at the very end of this presentation. It's, it's at KCMetroVision.org. And you pull it up and then you're going to have to look on the page. But if you scroll down the page, there's a map you can click. And then you can pull up the network as, as it's proposed right now. And then you can, you can look, it's color-coded by the types of service. And then you, if you want more information about a specific route, you click, you can click on that specific route and it will show you where it starts and stops. And, and then the map shows what kind of service it is, so.
Okay, fantastic. And then Sound Transit, Community Transit, and King County Metro are all working together, collaborating on how we're going to work regionally and connect not only Bothell, but the north, the south, east to west, right? You guys are all collaborating. Is that a yes?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm not going to ask any more questions, but I just want to take a little bit of time to address the comment I meant, made earlier. And first of all, I want to thank you for your presentations. I'm really excited about the SWIFT and Metro Bus Rapid Transit. I think that that, that Bus Rapid Transit is a, is a cost-efficient way to provide transit in this area. I'm less excited about Light Rail because of its expense and its ridership potential. But I had mentioned earlier that I felt that it was, it should be a priority for council to really promote inline transit stops on the 405 corridor so that we have true Bus Rapid Transit on that corridor. And how do we achieve that? Because Sound Transit has a limited budget and we, jurisdictions can't continue to, continue to add and ask for additional projects. And I would ask the council to look seriously at some of the plans for the 522 corridor investment. What the city has put out before is a desire to add a new park and ride facility along the 185th Street, 98th corridor. And I have spoken, I've opposed that in the past several times on many levels. First of all, we have spent $60 million on new crossroads project. There is $50 million spent at the South Campus access. It doesn't make sense to me that we would take bus transit off of roads that we have spent a ton of money upgrading and then move it on to local access streets. And, for example, moving it on to 185th. And I'm going to pass down the capital facility sheet, you all can look at it later. But the 185th Street reconstruction project is a minimum $10 million project that we do not have funds identified for. We are asking Sound Transit to include money in the plan to improve a road, not improve a transit facility, not to provide additional transit or to build a transit facility. We're asking to, money for, to build a road. And I think, well, I have a problem with that. Because we have an existing downtown park and ride that is centrally located. It doesn't have to be any more centrally located than what it is. It's right next to Main Street. It has the topographic ability to be expanded into a more user-friendly park and ride. It could be a location for transit-oriented development. And I think that that is the efficient way to enhance transit service for Bothell, is to keep our bus service on 522, on the road that's been improved to accommodate it with South Campus access through, I mean, with South Campus access to UW-Bothell and Cascadia College. And I just, I, I'm concerned that we are looking at, at, again, another minimum, minimum $10, $10 million road project that we don't have funding identified for. And yet, we have so many needs in this city to embark on a new roads project. So, I would ask the council to reconsider our request for the ST3 funding package and put the resources along 405 and to build or to expand our existing park and ride, not build a new park and ride facility over on 98th. Thank you.
Councilmember, please.
Excuse me, great, thank you so much for coming this evening, for all three of you, or all four of you, I guess, but three organizations that came. I just had three of my kids come here, I love them dearly, so that's why I stepped out a couple of times. And then I just got a text from my lovely bride. Nothing makes you smile more than two twin boys with a group of kids playing recorders. I don't know if you all heard, kids play recorders at the age of 10, but that's kind of a comical thing. So, a lot of what I do, most of what I do is all centered around my family. That's my motivation. So, if we can have a region that finds a way to work together to reduce congestion and to have a good creative development, that's an exciting thing for me because I want my kids to be incentivized to stay here. My son's going to be going to University of Washington Bothell next year, graduating from Cedar Park this year, so that's, I love it. He wants to stay here. And I think it's because we have a very vibrant region. We certainly have a great downtown Bothell that's moving forward. So, one of my questions to you then would be collectively congestion relief. I saw a lot of the presentation regarding connecting these lines together. How much of your planning goes into congestion relief?
Well, so whatever, I mean, so by, by our services, we, there is, there actually was a stat in the presentation, I don't think I quoted, in terms of how many cars we keep off the road through transit. So, there is a component, certainly, as you increase transit service and provide alternatives to driving alone, that is certainly one of our, our, our objectives, is to keep people out of cars and from driving alone by providing a full range of opportunities, whether it be fixed route, transit, and then our other services, the alternative services and the, and some of those other flexible services. So, I think all transit agencies, and I imagine Sound Transit has something to add to that as well, but I, I think that's, that's one of the areas that we certainly keep a tab on.
Roland Beehe, Community Transit as well. One stat that we've been using that I think is helpful, when, when we talk about congestion relief, one, one thing that we focus on is it's really in strategic corridors and it's about how you apply that service in markets where congestion is the primary issue. And so, one that is, is striking is when you consider the service that both Commander, Community Transit and Sound Transit offer at the Snohomish-King County Line on Interstate 5. When you think about what we're doing during the peak hour, 25% of the people are in 1% of the vehicles. And so, that's, that's the work that transit is doing in those lanes. So, that's, you know, when you're, when you're crossing, if you're crossing the King Snohomish County Line at 5:00 PM sometime, think about that. If the buses were to go away, 25% of the people are in those vehicles. And so, you'd add that to the congestion. So, it's in terms of congestion relief, yeah, the congestion is horrible at this point. That's a, that's a terrible commute, but how much worse would it be? The road would be completely filled. So, just to give you an illustration of what's, you know, the, the kind of, I guess, the kind of impact that we're having around the region in some of these corridors.
Great, well, I think a critical component to your plan are TOD development, transfer-oriented developments. What incentives do you try to work with developers to bring to the table to make sure that they're going to build there where the infrastructure is?
I, I'm, I'm not the project manager of our TOD program, I don't know all of the...
Will you speak into the mic, please, sorry?
Sorry, oh, sorry. I, I am not completely familiar with all of the tactics we use. I know that, you know, I think there's tax incentives and a lot, and, and when it's land that we own and we're looking to repurpose or partner with, then our priority, we're governed by a priority for organizations that want to provide affordable housing. So, so that's where that comes into play. Roland stepping up.
No, I was just, I was going to say, the, the question about how does transit get involved in transit-oriented development? The first thing is to do work like you're seeing here, like Metro's done. Community Transit's been out with a 20 to 30-year long-range vision for a handful of years now. Sound Transit's been in the business of long-range planning for transit for a while. The key is get the line on the map, get it out there decades ahead of time. And what we've done is we did that as we developed our long-range plan in collaboration with local jurisdictions, including Bothell throughout Snohomish County for us, but also reaching across the boundary into King County. And have that collaborative discussion as you're developing your plan with people who have control over the land use because that's the market. Transit doesn't control the market. We follow that land use, which determines where the people and the jobs are. If we lay that expectation out early and commit to those lines on a map over the long term, then what we say is the actual implementation of service will, will be paced by the development of that market. And what we say is there's a shared responsibility. People have to build the infrastructure, people have to incentivize the development, and that's largely your role as a local jurisdiction to come up with those mechanisms to, to spur that development and provide those incentives. We'll be there with the service that costs public dollars, you know, all day, every day as we, as we provide that. The idea of getting these plans out here is so that all three of those things can come together in a way that makes sense. So, so we are doing that, we're having more and more conversations. I think an indicator of our success is, it used to be that we would find out about development the day that they were starting to turn dirt. And it would be, you know, your buses need to get out of the way. What's, what's an indicator of progress is we're getting invited to the table when, when cities are doing their master planning years before the developers even show up. And so, they're hearing that message and they're understanding how critical the early coordination is. So, it is, it is getting better and we're, that's why we're doing this long-range planning.
I toured Kirkland Crossing today, which is an amazing development that Imagine Housing did with Polygon, but built upon your land, I believe, right? So, you had a lease or something to that extent, I don't understand it exactly. Then I went over to Estera Park, which has a TOD connection with the Light Rail that's eventually going to come in, but you have the bus system there. That building that's built upon a very large PT deck looks very expensive to construct. Went down to the Spring District where obviously the light rail... Went down to the Spring District where obviously the light rail's going to come through. So I did a lot of driving around today. So also Steve Cox, a member of our community, is leading a TOD development over Mount Lake Terrace. So I like seeing that these opportunities to take place, to go up to Surrey, B.C., and you can see that development's coming all around those light rail lines. Just wondering if there's more that we can do. I'd love to invite you to the table if you will come back to talk about Canyon Park. I wanted to talk about it this year, got pushed off into our planning for next year, but there's some real conversation we have there and true opportunities with, you already did the overpass, pedestrian overpass at that intersection, but I think there's some redevelopment that can occur in Canyon Park.
Actually, the connection's already been made. We had a meeting a number of weeks ago with both staff from Planning and Public Works, and I know that was the contact we made in that meeting was discussion of the master planning for Canyon Park and the redevelopment of that area. So we've already, that conversation has started. I think most of it's ahead of us, but we've certainly made the contact on it.
Good. Well, we, as you know, I believe we have an extraordinary staff here, so I'm glad you were able to meet with them. One last just interesting question. It looked like you had a little logo that looked like it was an Uber deal.
Oh.
What is, is that a new program that you have that's not Uber, but it's, you're connecting people with private cars or something?
Well, I'd have to look. So we have a number of flexible services that were, we have a pilot right now that's called Tripool, which is actually more of a van. It's an on-demand rideshare essentially, where someone has, a certified person is using one of our vans and they pick up people who have joined the program on their way to a park and ride. So that icon may have been for that. We're also recognizing that we are really trying to work with companies like Uber and Lyft. There's been some examples from around the country where transit agencies have used a relationship with those taxi companies to provide those last mile connections. And I've heard a couple of comments today that, that, you know, reflecting that it's difficult for people to get to the transit system here and that parking is a solution. It's a challenging solution in the long run to sustain enough parking for everyone who wants to use transit. And ultimately, you're really trying to find other opportunities for people to connect to the bus and, or light rail. And some of these companies through shared mobility, whether it be an Uber or Lyft or some other programs, those are, those are ones we're really looking for as things go forward for how we can leverage those opportunities.
Great. Thank you. And parting comment, I'm excited that Sound Transit's supported $5 million for the parking structure over on 98th, and I hope that continues. And I think it's truly the proper location to be as we are having our route to go to University of Washington and Cascadia Community College. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for the time.
All right. Thank you. I'm not going to comment just because we're running out of time, but I really appreciate all three agencies coming out tonight. AB 16-078, which is a study session, it's a progress update of property owner facilitation meeting for the Fitzgerald subarea with Mr. Tom Burdette.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, we want to give you an update of where we are with the Fitzgerald's subarea planning. I'm happy to announce that when we, when we talked to you in February, we're sort of walking, talked to you last month in April, we were at a gallop. Now we're at a full run. The workshops are planned. We've got one planned for May 12th, that's this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30. Got another workshop planned for May 26th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and a third one on June 9th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The, the meeting this, this Thursday will focus on the best available science and low impact development. We're going to start out with a presentation by Parametrics. We've also engaged with a public facilitation consultant, Kristin Green, with, with Cogan, Owens and Green. They specialize in engaging people to create sustainable communities. They're very experienced with this type of activity and they bring a lot of capability to the enhanced public facilitation process. They've also brought along Friggin' Ossie and Associates as adjunct support to their facilitation, preparing graphics and preparing PowerPoint presentations and also keypad polling. This collaborative, interactive process will, is designed for property owners, environmental groups and development professionals. It is custom fit to this, to this subarea. In addition to the keypad polling, they'll focus on group facilitation, some group tabletop exercises and, and work on consensus building. They may also focus on, on some areas of small group caucuses where different, different parties may, may want to group together, discuss issues and come back. Initially, the, the facilitation, we're planning seven, seven or eight tables with, with parties of eight to 10 at each table. We hope to have a, a good collaboration with, with property owners, a development interest and, and a environmental representation at each table. So we, we think that we followed the direction of City Council they gave us last fall to plug in this enhanced public involvement, public engagement in February. The council also indicated to us that you wanted to see it focused on the property owners. We've done that. We think we'll have an equal number of development professionals and environmental representation. Obviously, we'll, because we've used the county database of the property owners, we expect the property owners to be the majority participants in these focus groups. There's been some information out in the community that suggested this was a committee. It's not a committee. This is just, this is a focus group process and we're, anybody, anybody's welcome to attend, but we've sent invitations specifically to parties that have been engaged previously, both on the environmental side and in the property owner area, as well as developers that have been brought in by the property owners who are, who have demonstrated an interest in developing in the area. This, I think this identifies and reflects a balance of interest between managed growth and preservation. The property owners are directly impacted by any of the solutions that are brought forward for council to consider. This is also supplemental. It doesn't replace the normal process. I want to make that very clear. This is completely supplemental activity. It's recognized by GMA and the GMA indicates that you can always go above and beyond in public engagement, public involvement in these processes. And I, I can't think of an area in Bothell that probably is more deserving of this attention than this particular area in the Fitzgerald. So as we move forward, we, we are getting ready to put up a FTP site. It'll be a link to the city's website where information can be found on, on this activity. We'll put, we'll put the technical memorandums from Parametrics on there. There's also a, an interest from Parametrics to, to incorporate some of the information that comes from this first meeting into their technical memorandum. Bruce will talk about that in a minute. We, we purposely delayed, or we purposely got out of schedule, I guess is a better term, this technical memorandum so that we could have one meeting. Parametrics wanted to complete some of the work that they're doing on the best available science and have this first meeting with the property owners and environmental group before they prepared that technical memorandum. Once it's finished, we'll put it up on the website and it'll be available for all, all concern. And, you know, as I said, it's, it's a focus group stakeholder process and the interested parties are to aid you as the council in your deliberations. After they're concluded, they'll have a product for you to review. That'll be for your consideration as we go through the adoption process and the planning code amendments, along with the 2016 planning code amendments for this year. So we, we look at it as augmentation and supplemental. The, the consultant, Kristin Green, as I said, is with Cogan, Owens and Green. She's the managing, managing member. She has, she has given this a catalyst of energy and as I said, we're, we're now running with this project. Why don't we let Bruce give you an update on where Parametrics is with their work and then we'll take questions.
Even mayors and members of the council, essentially what Parametrics has done is they have crafted a custom best available science and best management practices process. And essentially what that do, that included, that included a lot of time spent out in the field doing site reconnaissance work. Unfortunately, that took a little longer than we had hoped because we had to coordinate between the property owners and all the scientists and the staff. And, and we weren't able to complete that work as quickly as we wanted to, but that work has been completed. So now we're on the final stages of this discovery process, if you would. And that may be a good way to describe it, is a discovery process where we look at the best of all science. We look at low impact development. We look at best management practices as well as receive information from the people who will be in the room this Thursday, because that's a great resource. One of the things that we identified early on was that that's going to be a really important part of this process to have their input. And Parametrics has identified that they want to hear from those people because they may identify areas of investigation that, that maybe they did not think of, or maybe might have more interest. Maybe an example would be previous pavements or something like that. There may be more interest on the part of the group discussion to have an analysis about that. So that's one of the reasons why they want to basically have that facilitated discussion before they completed the final best available science provisions. So I think I'll end at that point and, and we'll take questions as necessary. And we're very excited about this process.
One, one thing I wanted to add, Kirsten has also contacted some of the individuals that have been involved and had one-on-one conversations over the telephone so that she can get up to speed on some of the issues. I know members of the audience that she's contacted. I think that's been helpful to her to, to get a, kind of an overview of, of what some of the concerns and what some of the expectations are.
All right. Great. Is there any questions? Councilmember Samberg.
You referenced a technical memorandum. Is that the same thing as the best available science report?
As a matter of fact, it is, yeah. That's kind of the form it'll be taking. I don't know if anybody remembers back from 2006 when we did the initial Fitzgerald study, but basically what it was, there was a series of technical memorandums that were issued and that became a final big report at the end. But yeah, so that's, you know, that's one of the ways that we kind of communicate this information to people.
And will a draft best available science report be available to the participants before this May 12th meeting?
No, they will not be available, again, because we want to take advantage of the group people, the, the folks in the room to make sure they can identify anything that might happen as far as any particular interests they are. So what we are going to do now is we're going to make sure that is posted on the webpage through our FTP site or on our webpage no later than May 20th. So it'll be available for the second series of meetings that we have.
I mean, I can, I can understand wanting to have the group inform the process a little bit, but in my mind, best available science is best when it's objective and formulated prior to the input of all of the participants. And so I think that it's important to at least have a draft document that could, before they meet the first time, that can then be, that can then incorporate some of the conversation that occurs at that first meeting. But we are, we're paying our consultant a considerable amount of money. And I think the, to most efficiently use their time, we need to make sure that the participants have at least a draft of the best available science study before they meet. And so what I would like to propose is that you postpone this first workshop of May 12th and make May 26th the first workshop, given your, the deadline that you just explained, which was a best available science report on May 20th.
I would recommend not doing that for the main reason, the Parametrics team has been scheduling meetings with the property owners to meet onsite. So as recently as yesterday, they had one of those meetings, most of them occurred last week. They're still synthesizing that information, putting it together to put out that report. I think that, that their opinion is that they're, they're still absorbing information. Some of the, some of the residents who have lived on these properties for decades have considerable amount of historical knowledge that's beneficial to Parametrics. It's not, it's not solely just a research of, of literature. I think it's also the ground truthing that is extremely important to this project. So we would recommend against that.
And I would suggest to council that, that ground truthing is important and it's important to have a document before all of the participants that can provide some basis for discussion rather than a first meeting where they're just, you know, discovering ground rules and, and that sort of thing. I think it's important, we, we set out on this process to, and it's an expensive one, to get a best available science study and to have a facilitated process. I think this process will be, will, will be best heard if the participants have at a minimum a draft best available science study to work from when they come to their first meeting. And so that, for that, I'd like to ask council to postpone the first workshop until May 26th. That's my proposal.
Deputy Mayor.
I would agree with Councilmember Samberg. I think it's important that people have something to look at before they go into a facilitation process.
Any comment? Councilmember McNeil?
I'm going to agree with the staff's recommendation.
Do you have any other comments you want to make? No?
I would agree with the staff recommendation. I am curious regarding the supplemental process you mentioned. There's no decisions that are being made collectively, but will a recommendation come to us?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. As more than one, I suspect. You know, I, I think that there'll be, you know, a variety of recommendations that come to the council in the form of policy and code, code amendments. You know, I, I appreciate the comments about, about having something to read. Not everybody will read it, but the intent of Parametrics is to, is to really give a summary at this first meeting of what they intend to write rather than putting it into print first and then, and then publish it all by the 20th. I think that it's kind of a fine line, but I think that's not a bad method.
Great. Well, I certainly stick with your recommendation and trust Parametrics and the facilitators who do this daily to continue to go forward on the process that they recommend. Thank you both.
So just real quick, have the, has the Parametrics report included pilot infiltration tests and the geotechnical reports for the developments that are also adjacent to the city limits outside of Snohomish, in Snohomish County?
They have not received a lot of information from the areas outside Snohomish County other than what was done originally as part of the 2006 study. One of the issues is just trying to gather up all this information. We sent them reams of information from our own studies that we've got and much less trying to find all the Snohomish County studies that are out there. And, and I don't know if they have asked for that from Snohomish County or not. I've been primarily focused on getting the information that I can lay my hands on.
Okay. This is, so soils analysis and infiltration feasibility is definitely part of the best available science study or report?
You know, I'd have to ask them exactly what the style of provision that they have. I do know that some of the information that I gave them did do kind of what you were after, the infiltration capabilities. And we've had some information from some developments near the area that was provided to Parametrics.
Okay. Great.
And, oh, and GIS mapping in some of those areas that they've basically been synthesizing into this report.
Okay. That's great. I do support keeping the meeting two days from now to, to have that meeting. I imagine everybody's already planning on being there. Ideally, you know, I think we did set out to try to have that... we did set out to try to have that report done before we started the facilitated process, but it sounds like greater minds on the topic have decided that it makes more sense to come with a draft and have it a little more flexible, a little more flexibility, I guess, going into the first meeting. So I support the staff recommendation.
You know, it was something that the facilitator recommended we do.
Excellent. I think everybody had a chance to talk. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is a presentation from Cascadia College. We have Eric Murray here to present to us. And I promise we won't cut you off at 7:30, since it's 10 to 8.
Good evening, Mayor Rayum, councilmembers. Thanks for having me today. And I appreciate being able to talk about Cascadia. I'm Eric Murray, the president of the college. And I want to first thank you. Over the last few months, all of you have showed a renewed interest in making sure that we're connected in the neighborhoods in Bothell. It's not just the downtown neighborhood, but it's the campus neighborhood. It's across the freeway. It's North Bothell. And each one of you that I've spoken with recently has shared with me your desire to really see a unified Bothell. And the campus plays an important role of that. I know that all of you are familiar in some shape or form with Cascadia, some more intimately than others. But just as an interesting, a couple of interesting facts, I've never presented on Cascadia in front of the council in the six years that I've been president. That's, and I'm the chief spokesperson. So to offer you an opportunity to learn just a little bit more is exciting for me. And then the second thing, in the hour and a half presentation over transit that you just heard, at 1 hour and 22 minutes, Councilmember Sandberg finally mentioned Cascadia College. And at 1 hour 29 minutes, Councilmember Freed mentioned the college, compared to the 18 times that U-Dub Bothell was mentioned. There's, there's no, we are a unified campus. We are one location with two institutions. And that just reminds me that it's time to make sure that you're aware of how those two institutions exist and how we function, both as a team and as individual units. And as things have come up in the news most recently about different proposals and things that we're doing jointly and separately, I thought it was a good opportunity to make sure that everybody is aware of how we differ and how we're similar. So thank you for the opportunity. And I'll run you through some facts. I want to help you get to know us just a little bit better. And you may know some things, but this is a current update. These are statistics and facts that are very recent. And Cascadia is unique. We are the newest of the 34 community and technical colleges. We have the highest percentage of students pursuing academic transfer degrees. There's two kinds of community college degrees. There are workforce preparation degrees, professional technical degrees, vocational is an older word. And there are courses that allow people to get ready for university. And Cascadia focuses primarily on university preparation, about 90% of our students. We have the youngest median student age. Our average age on our campus, I'll ask you to guess. We'll make this a little interactive. Anybody want to guess what the average age at the Cascadia campus is? Well, I heard 19, good guesses. It's 20, 20.1. The average age at U-Dub Bothell is 27. And the average age in the university, in the community college system is 27. At Lake Washington Tech, it's 34. So we have the youngest median age out there. We also have the highest percentages of students who work part-time. That's an interesting thing to think about. We have the lowest amount of students on financial aid out of the 34 colleges at Cascadia because of the demographics that we serve. However, we have the highest amount working, which means to me that students still need the funds in order to go to school, but that they're not eligible for financial aid. So we have a lot of students working. There are some other things that make us unique from, well, we're the only co-located college with a public university in the state of Washington. There are three others in the United States, but they were never purposefully designed to be together, to put a branch of a university together with a community college. And those two entities differ in a couple of significant ways. First is governance. The Cascadia College is governed by a board of trustees. I'd like to introduce Mike Kelly, who's one of our trustees with us today. He was appointed by the governor to serve on our board. The University of Washington Bothell is technically governed first by the University of Washington Seattle. So their CEO reports to the CEO at U-Dub Seattle, the CEO at U-Dub Seattle. Anamari Kausay reports then to the Board of Regents, who are also a board appointed by the governor. So both institutions are governed in separate lines and don't meet until we get to the governor, meaning that as we make decisions, we have to negotiate and talk about our different priorities and needs. This co-location also is unique because we're funded differently. We both receive tuition dollars. And about half of Cascadia's operating budget comes from tuition dollars. Less than a third of U-Dub's operating budget comes from tuition dollars. So there's a difference there. I'm going to back up. 50% of tuition comes from tuition dollars at Cascadia, 50% from state support. Less than a third of U-Dub's budget comes from state support, meaning they have to rely more heavily on tuition than the community college system does. So I wanted to get that, that straight. There are different funding mechanisms out there. And which means it's not an apple-to-apples comparison of how much money we have or the campus have. We both have to enter into a discussion, understanding what our different governance structures are and what our different financial structures are as we go about negotiating how to run a joint campus together. It would be kind of like two entities owning the same building and having to share the space within the building. How do you decide who gets which rooms, who doesn't get which rooms? If I want to use that room, how is that going to happen? When I have customers walk in the door, do they see your logo first or my logo first? You have all of these little nuances that you have to think about. For a long time, U-Dub Bothell had flags everywhere in the city. And Cascadia said, "We need flags everywhere in the city because we want to be present just as much as a university is." We'll talk a little bit more about how we work well together as a team, too. We do serve Bothell residents. So from Bothell zip codes in spring quarter of this year, we had 1,140 students enrolled in programs. That's a lot of students from the Bothell area. We had 235 students enrolled in Running Start, which is our high school students coming to us. And another difference between U-Dub Bothell and Cascadia, U-Dub Bothell doesn't have Running Start. I'm pretty sure about that fact. Anybody from U-Dub Bothell here want to correct me? Am I right? Rosemary? Yeah, yeah. Just want to make sure. Fact out of my head, I want to make sure I've got it right. We have over 600 students in our Running Start program coming from 47 different school districts. Cascadia is becoming known as a place to go to for Running Start. A lot of the students are in the homeschool program because of the intimate setting that we provide. So another difference in the kinds of demographics and the people we serve. We are part of the community in as much as we have over 1,000 students coming from Bothell. We have 4,700 students coming from the greater east side area, including parts of Snohomish, 85 staff and 145 faculty, including a good majority of those who are part-time. So to bring up some comparisons, U-Dub Bothell has 5,200 students. Cascadia has 4,700 students. There's not much difference in the number of bodies that are on the campus. U-Dub Bothell has 306 faculty and staff, or 350 faculty, 300 staff, for a total of over 600. Cascadia is working on a total of over 200. This is, these are some of the main differences between the two institutions. We absolutely love being co-located because we have the highest transfer rate to the University of Washington. That slide's coming in a minute. Than any of the other community colleges because of this co-location, because of the opportunity to work together. But we are actually very different and distinct institutions in that we're governed differently. We have different financial structures. Our student bodies are different, not only in age, but in the amounts that are coming to us from high school or not from high school, in the number of staff and faculty that we have working at the institution. And this is not to say that Cascadia is under-resourced and woe us. We make do with the money that we have, given the resources that we have. And U-Dub Bothell is working with us now to make sure that we can leverage those resources for the good of the Bothell community, as well as to make sure that that transfer is really happening in an effective way. What do we offer? Councilmember Sandberg said Cascadia College. Councilmember Freed said Cascadia Community College. Our name is now Cascadia College. We, but I don't ever really try to draw the attention to the community college when people say it because we are a community college. We are part of that system and we are designed to serve a community. In fact, three communities, the North Shore School District, the Lake Washington School District, and the Riverview School District. But the trustees decided a while ago to make our official name Cascadia College in honor of the fact that we now have one bachelor's degree in sustainable practices. We will be introducing in June the idea of a second bachelor's degree in mobile applications to our trustees for approval. And so those bachelor's degrees, combined with our associate's degrees and our certificate degrees, our workforce training efforts, mean that we are a comprehensive college, that we offer all sorts of level of education, not in competition with U-Dub Bothell, but actually in complement to U-Dub Bothell. We also have expanded online and hybrid classes. 20% of our students are taking classes in those formats. And we also have a corporate and continuing education division or arm, meaning that we are going out to businesses in the area, trying to serve them and helping them to develop their workforces that exist in their companies, and also helping them to attract more people to their companies with the right skills. So there are a number of things that Cascadia does that U-Dub Bothell doesn't do, like the two-year degrees and the corporate continuing education. So as I said, we're the top transfer school to the U-Dub system. So out of all of our graduates, about 50% go onto U-Dub Bothell, 25% go on to U-Dub Seattle, and the rest of the remaining 25% are dispersed around other colleges and universities in the country. And we have been consistently ranked in the 16 years of our existence as one of the top 25 community colleges in the nation. So once you get to know us a little bit, you can love us a little bit more. But the idea is that we really want to be a good partner. We not only want to be a good partner to U-Dub Bothell because we share geographic location and we share certain needs. We share development needs. We share transit needs. We share parking needs. We share grounds and wetlands needs. We share services like safety, custodial maintenance. We are in a process right now with Chief Cummings to talk about how the Bothell Police Department can be better tied to the campus. There are lots of ways where we want to be good partners with U-Dub Bothell, but we also want to be partners with the city of Bothell. You are our hometown. And while we serve, the Cascadia College side serves Woodenville, Kirkland, Redmond, Bothell, Carnation Duval, because we're in your hometown, we want to make sure we know you well. And as the council moves forward and their vision and making new decisions and changes and thinking about transit, we want to make sure that the community college is just as present as U-Dub Bothell is. And to do so means that as the chief spokesperson, I need to have a relationship with all of you. We need to present hopefully regularly to you to keep you up to speed on the changes that are happening at the college and how we are evolving. There are, most of the community colleges in the state are in the process of doing budget cuts right now. Cascadia is not. We are actually growing. And we have resources to continue to grow. So we continue to be a very successful institution and hopefully an asset to the city of Bothell. I know you're running behind tonight. Rushed through that. Wanted to give you the opportunity just to get to know us by the numbers a little bit better. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any questions from council?
Questions?
Everybody. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really appreciate learning more about Cascadia. I was there for the governor's race and equity summit. And you have a lovely building there. I can't remember the name, but Mobius?
Yeah.
And I look forward to getting to know you better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Freed?
Well, I know you and I love you. For the first week--
I won't tell my spouse.
For the first week you were here, I remember your passion for the campus. And you had nothing but the intent to have the campuses, or two institutions, working together. That was on your heart and that's what you wanted to do because prior to your arrival, history, there was a little bit of a separation there. And so I know that's been your heart. You've done a great job to do that. And in all reality, we as a city need to do a better job of expressing our interest in reaching out to you to have you more integrated in the community because you are a huge part of it, obviously. Thank you so much for your leadership in the Bothell Chamber, for helping us as a city grow in that direction. Curious, how does enrollment look for next year?
Positive. We have been consistently budgeting for about a 2% to 3% enrollment increase. And most of the other institutions are seeing 5% to 7% enrollment decreases the other community colleges. So our demographic is really expanding with the fourth addition of a new high school in North Shore School District. That's going to be beneficial to us as well. So we're doing actually pretty steady with that.
Excellent. Thank you so, so much for your steady leadership. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much for coming in. I appreciate it. You reached out to me and asked to come in. And one of the things you did mention was the, how can the city be a better partner with, my question, I guess, back to you is, do you have any ideas of how the city can be a better partner with Cascadia?
Yeah, yes, I do. Thanks for the opportunity. Just ask yourself two questions anytime a proposal about the campus comes forward. One, is this a joint campus effort or is this institution-specific? When there are things like the retirement of our PUD, that's a joint campus issue. And that's something that you need to hear from both of us about. When there's something like a residence hall, that's currently a U-Dub Bothell issue. And that's something that you'll hear from U-Dub Bothell about. And sometimes we can intermix who's responsible for what. So we're happy to be good supportive partners of each other. But it is also important to know who takes ownership over things. So, because sometimes we make an assumption that it's just U-Dub Bothell or just Cascadia when it's actually both of us. Sometimes we make an assumption that it's both of us when maybe we don't want anything to do with that topic. Not mentioning any specific topics whatsoever. But the, I would ask that you ask yourselves that question. Is this a joint campus issue or is this an institutional-specific issue? That's number one. And then number two, the campus wants to be a part of the city. We seem to be an island. We, I've heard so many times, you're an island unto the city. And that's okay, I guess. We have this nice little barrier of green around us. But really, we want to help the city succeed in its economic vitality and its citizenship. The U-Dub Bothell Block Party this last Saturday was a great example of pairing, partnering with the chamber to make sure that at least our partner institution is very invested in that. And there'll be opportunities for more of that. So to, someone once said Bothell should be called a great college town or university town. I don't know if that's really a logo or slogan we want, but the idea that we have a 10,000-person higher education system in this town and to be integrated with city government in the decisions you make, that's a large number of constituents that often go unnoticed. And so I'd ask you to think about that every time you make a decision. How does that neighborhood, how do those 10,000 people get affected by the decisions you make? That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. That wasn't a plant either. That was--
Thank you. Have an enjoyable rest of the--
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. So I believe that's, okay. So we're going to take a 15-minute break. So we're running a little bit behind. So let's call it, well, let's just make it, we'll start at 8:20. Is that okay with everybody? It's a little short on 15. Okay. We're recessed till 8:20.